All right, Steve.
Mr. Dohmeyer, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
I would love that. Thank you. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Dohmeyer. Roll call, Irene.
Recorder going. Chair Hollingsworth.
Here.
Vice Chair Molno.
Here.
Lois Derry. No. Eldon Swanson. No. Steve Dohmeyer. And Genevieve.
Here.
Yeah, I'm hearing something else.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was trying to record, but I pushed play.
This is a public meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, and this is a time to take any public comment if there's any. Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes from our August 24 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm moved. I'm moved to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Chairperson and trustees reports. Dr. Molno.
The Crane Art Gallery is currently working on providing for the community virtual exhibits of art. There is a video link, and that's the way that these virtual exhibits will function. There'll be a link on the library website. And I had asked Irene if she could share this link with us, for those of you that haven't seen it, just to give you an idea of the kind of, one kind of virtual exhibit that we might have. And this is, and I have his name written down here, and I've lost it someplace, but it's the artist whose artwork is, was up in the gallery when we shut down. And he had a video of his artwork done very professionally. To be quite honest, most of the virtual exhibits that will follow will probably not be exactly like this because of the way that he's put it together. But we do have, we do have several artists that are interested in doing this, and it's, we're in the process of putting a calendar together and getting that done. So Irene, is it possible for you to share on the screen with us that video?
Let's give it a shot. Can you see it?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
This is, what you've seen here, this is really a very professional example of exhibits. I know I just, over the weekend, watched a virtual exhibit, Gauguin exhibit at the Royal Academy in London, that I had been scheduled to go and see in person. And it was done very similarly to that, where they went through each, showed each painting, had beautiful music in the background. The other artists that we're looking at, what we will see for the most part are links to websites that will give you information about the artists. Some of them will break down the artwork into, you know, click on this link and you see the landscapes, this one that you see the still life. So a variety of different ways, but we want the community to know that we're still alive and well. And the, at least, at least one of the artists that I know of that is, has said she's willing to do the virtual exhibit is also willing to do a live exhibit if we should open up. So we'll be, we'll be set either way. And just one last thing, the Committee for the Library expressed their interest in making sure that the trustees remain as committed to safeguarding their monies as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Molno. Thank you. Steve Dohmeyer, would you like to talk about your publicity and also your work on the City Ad-Hot Committee? Give us a little update.
Oh, Liz, I'd be happy to. Hey, Eldon.
How you doing?
Hi, Eldon. We're glad to see you.
And I'm not sure, but before I start on this, I'm not sure who we address with this, but I have a personal preference. I know on the, on the agenda, it's labeled as the publicity and marketing meeting. As someone who's spent decades in the biz, we always say marketing and publicity. We always do the marketing first. It's more of a general topic. So that's just a personal preference, but I'm never going to be able to say publicity and marketing.
We will make a note of that, because it's your committee. You can name it.
Good. I'll name it after my granddaughter. There you go. Yeah, the marketing publicity, I think the notion is that the library's doing a lot of great work, but not everybody knows about it. And there was a terrific graphic, one of my artists made years ago, that says, you know, if I don't know something, it's my job to find out about it. And I think that it's really easy for us to see that, that I didn't know about something, therefore, why didn't they do a better job of advertising it? And the truth is, of course, there's a lot of different ways that you can get, send messages out there. It's just, where's the audience and how are they going to receive it? So we met, Irene and I met with Denise Dobbs on August 31st to discuss where the library is in terms of its marketing and publicity efforts, and I offered some suggestions on, on what they could do. You know, selecting the proper platforms for any company is really important, just to see where are they, where are your people currently getting their information from? And where are they going to be getting it from in the future? Where are your new people coming from? So we went through the current usages, the current venues that are being used, the distribution list for email and the contacts for press and publicity that Denise has been using, and then the social media that's out there. And by the way, I'm going to kind of give homework to everybody. It's a Zoom call. This is how we do school, right? If you have a computer and you have Facebook, if you're on Facebook, would you please go to Facebook and to the Crow Public Library and start liking some of the stuff that's there, because they post things and I like it. And I'm like, what if two people that like it, because we're just, it's not becoming viral enough. And as we've learned, Facebook, the more you like something, the more it says, hey, you'd like something more like this. So the algorithm really rewards engagement there. So I think those of us who are using Facebook need to make sure that we're promoting the Crow Public Library as well, and that we're doing our part to get the message out there. We talked about doing a Facebook campaign. There's a lot of great videos that Tara's doing, the Storytime, and there's lots of things that are going there. I'd suggest perhaps doing a weekly newsletter, because they have a patron's email list that this goes out to, which I hope all of us are on as well. And I know Irene has been creating some materials on that. Do you want to, Irene, speak to what you thought, how you thought our meeting went?
Well, I really appreciated your feedback, and I've been generating, I generated a couple of articles about our passports, for example. And Steve talked me down, because it was a real, it's like, are you, are you, do you have a fever? Do you have travel fever? That's what I said. And he said, that's not, no. So I appreciate his professional feedback on that. So we're going to generate another one this week. I just have to think about what yet, but.
Most of us are stuck at home, and so we kind of crave stimulation from the outside, and we want to know what's going on. And the library's busy. I mean, you know, there was the book sale that went on and the curbside service and all that kind of stuff. But if people don't know about it, you know, they don't know. So we're trying to just figure out as many ways as possible to get the word out there. The traditional ways, of course, you know, through the newspaper and inserts, that's, and then, of course, doing online as well. We're a little bit hamstrung by the fact that Denise is a part-time employee. She only has 20 hours a week. So when I suggest, hey, calling up these newspapers and making personal relationships with them so they know you, she's like, I don't have time to do that. I've only got 20 hours a week to get all this other stuff done. So, you know, it's, it's kind of, you either generate material or you're getting, you're working on those relationships to make sure the material gets out there. You know, a full-time staffer would have a little easier time of it. But, but I think she's doing the very best she can under the circumstances. And of course, I think the best evangelist I know of for the library is right there, Irene. I'm pointing right there, because that's where she is on my screen. She could be down there. It's like, it's a Brady Bunch. So what else? Yeah, I think that's, that's, I look forward to working, working more in conjunction with Irene to see how, how we can get the message out there. Because, you know, and by the way, I'm, not to reveal my old-schoolness, but I suggested banners too, because, you know, if you're not online, if you don't have Facebook, if you're not going to the website, nobody does, you know, nobody, no one's going, I think I'll just go visit the website today and scroll around a little bit. We don't do that. Websites are repositories for information, where if I want to know something, then I go to the website. But in terms of proactively getting the message out there, banners are a great job. I mean, they're, they're coming down in price, and if they're properly hung, it's a good way to announce things and get people's attention, especially if it's not the same banner up in the same place all the time. So our brains like novelty, and so that's what we're kind of drawn to. Any questions on the marketing and publicity?
I have one, and, you know, I don't want to be the, the one to say that maybe we have a problem here. But I'm concerned, because I have a couple of my children and a few, a few friends of my generation also that have decided that they no longer want to do social media after watching this Netflix thing, The Social Dilemma.
I understand. And by the way.
I don't know if, I rather doubt that social media is going away.
No.
On any level, but, but I concur with your idea of the banners, because it's always good to have a plan B.
Well, and also, you know, look, there's people driving by on a honey ten, as we get out and around, we see things. And the key to marketing is, you never rely on one source. You don't go, well, there was an editorial, there was an article in the newspaper. That's all we need. You have to hit people on all fronts, all different ways, and then expect this much return on it. I haven't seen that documentary yet, and it's been recommended to me. I will tell you, though, there is very much controversy over that. There is an expert on distraction who said, no, it's not the tools, it's ourselves. I will, I will send you the link, Linda, because there's.
I'd like to read that.
Yeah, yeah. And I feel the same way. I'm very ambivalent about Facebook. On one hand, I know it's a good tool to get stuff out there. On the other hand, I don't like the way they've sort of abdicated responsibility for the effects of what their platform's doing. So it's, it's tough, you know. Anything else on, on marketing and publicity? Questions? I didn't really prepare anything particular about the redo of the San Marino Center. I hope you were all on the Zoom call for the library, or for the city council meeting that we had on the 25th. No, no one was there? Okay, fine. I was there in person. I was the only person on the task force that showed up in person. I don't know. I felt abandoned. To, to, to give you the short good news, the city council, by a three to two vote, razor-thin, agreed that the building should look like the library.
Yay.
I, I repeatedly, the wishes of this board to have it, have the style match the library and be in harmony with that. So how did they do, Robert? Was, did I do a good job pushing for us there? He was on the call, so that's.
Yeah, I would agree. The council did appreciate the feedback that you had. So at least we had a representative from the task force present. That, that definitely helped the conversation.
Yeah, and so now we'll be meeting, we'll continue to do our Thursday afternoon meetings to move forward, to refine the design, so it's, it's better than it was originally. Because when you're kind of given vague direction, you kind of throw up something. We have mentioned a couple of times before, we have two architects on the task force, Jennifer Giles and Raymond Chang. So they'll be, they'll be looking at this with a fine tooth comb and making suggestions to make it complimentary to the library and have it fit with, with the, the location there. So I appreciate your, your concern and your advocacy for this, because the planning commission thought it shouldn't, should not be looked that way and should stay the way it is. So I think it was due a lot to your vehemence that we were able to make it one, one piece of center floating with the library. So, yeah, so we move forward on that. The plans are, are going to be looked at and changed. And, yeah, it's just sort of rushing forward. Any questions?
Steve, thank you so much for all your effort and the time that you're putting in. I heard you do the presentation originally, and you represented us so well. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Liz. Appreciate it. Happy to do it. And that's all I've got for my report.
Any questions for Steve?
I just wanted to add a great big thank you. I think you were a great voice for the library.
Thank you.
Eldon, do you have a report for us?
No.
Okay. Genevieve?
Oh, um, let me see. My mic is on. Liz and I had a liaison, budget liaison meeting with Irene and the rest of staff, Robert. And we were able to cover quite a bit. And I would say it was a very good first step that we have a better understanding of the budget. We have covered that our, our goal is to support our library staff. And also, we would like to stay in black, meaning, you know, meet personnel, personnel cost and meet community needs. That means we're buying books, ebooks, reference information, cooling center. All of that is trying to serve our community. And Robert and Irene has reviewed every budget line items with us and talked about the expenditures. So the rest of the committee doesn't, I mean, the rest of the board doesn't have to go through line by line. And here's the summary, and we discussed about all the expenditure. We have discussed with new expenditure for the rest of 2020 and 21, including story walk and paint night. Staff has also shared ideas for savings. We have talked about turning down the AC when there's no one using it. So that's just some detail. We also have emphasis that we need to keep the, continue buying books and also offer virtual programming in order to meet the community, community needs and to keep a highly visible profile. So we could have our Patreons for now and for later. After the pandemic, we reviewed the memo from City Finance Director Paul Chung. Staff has shared an overview of the process and the timeline to make budget changes. I think, let's see. Oh, we realized that library has a 12, I mean, had a 12% cost recovery. It's not considered to be revenue, and it's, it's, oh, we're not considered to be a revenue generating department. So passport revenue goes to the city's coffers, and then it comes back to the library. So we're not going to be too stressed over that. We have also discussed donation monitors. And the portion that is carried over between fiscal years, it's approximately $52,498. And we talked about advising the board releasing those reserve fund for purchases, especially children's book and bestseller titles. We have discussed how funds might be used in the event of expenditure exceed donation revenue this year due to the unpredictable situation here. And we really appreciated our library staff for working with us and helping us to go line by line with the very fun budget items. So that concludes my report. If anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Genevieve. I also want to thank Robert and Irene, who were so ready for our meeting. And as you said, line by line, answered all of our questions, and I feel much better informed. So thank you.
Right, thank you.
Can I just say, I think it's a great idea that we have this committee set up, because rather than have a group as a whole, wonder, I wonder what's going on. Having specific people go in and get the nitty-gritty is a huge help. I know it's more work from staff with Irene and Robert, but it's, it's really worth it. It kind of puts the rest of us, it kind of gives us peace of mind. So thanks so much for that.
I agree. I think this way, everyone is working towards us more targeted, one area, this way to bring a summary of, a snapshot of what's going on. So instead of everyone is into every little detail.
Thank you, Genevieve. Council member, Council Member Susan Jacobowski, do you have any report for our group?
I was asked by Irene to report back on the issue that came before city council. It was on our consent calendar about the minutes for your meetings. Would you like to hear about that?
Yes, please.
Certainly. This was on our consent calendar. And consent simply means that we take action items as a group from the agenda. And anyone can pull, either the public or a council member, an item for further discussion. There was no further discussion on this item. So we voted to, to approve summary minutes. And just for detailed information, you are currently receiving action minutes, which reflect the action taken, including the maker and second of motion and the vote on each motion. The content of presentations and discussions are not included in action minutes. Summary minutes include the information in action minutes plus a summary of points discussed and individual concerns. As you know, the summary minutes do take longer to prepare. However, we totally respect the library board's request to have this detail going forward. So you are good to go, and that was approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Susan, would you be able to comment on the agenda items before the city council on a community services director?
Yes, we also approved somebody who will be starting soon. My apologies that I don't have my agenda in front of me. He is currently with Temple City. And of course, will be giving notice and coming to join us soon. So I would presume, once he is on board, we will be introduced at a council meeting. And certainly following that to the library board. And my apologies for my cat wanting to join in the conversation.
Any questions for Susan?
If you want, Chair, I can fill in a little bit of the details. The name of the new director is Brian Howard. He is the Assistant to the City Manager at Temple City and also the Economic Development Manager. He will begin October 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to administrative business, the city librarian's report.
Hello, everybody. I just got an email from Lois Derry. She's trying to get into the meeting, so I'll give her a.
Oh, shoot.
I know. It's so tough when you can't do that. The good news about this last month in August is that our circulation went up 8%. So the ebook circulation went down a little bit, but we also answered 77 reference queries on telephone. So we're doing telephone reference, and that's what's going on with that. The Friends of the Library will meet not on the 30th, but on the 1st this week to talk about their next book sale. The Foundation met to talk about their 25th anniversary celebration. We did, we were able to change the timing of the lights and the HVAC to be off on the nights and the weekends, except for now. nights and the weekends, except for now because we're cooling center, so. Jeff is taking everybody's temperatures every day and recording them and we'll turn that into the city. We asked that Michael Throne come to this meeting, but he's out of town, so he'll probably come to the next meeting. We'll pass for that. Tara is working on reorganizing the picture book. She's not, she's going to take a slow approach with that. She's going to do just a few subject, popular subject neighborhoods, neighborhoods such as royalty, transportation and superheroes. Right now, there's no changes in the COVID-19 situation with the city or the county. We're still holding tight so far. And let's see, in first three weeks of September, Jeff accepted 78 passport applications. So that's coming back and his book, his book is filled up. We are considering opening from 12 to 7, that's 2 to 7 on Thursdays because people were saying they couldn't get here because they couldn't get off of work to come get their books. So we'll see what that happens with that. In September, the library made an obstacle course outlined in chalk on West Drive and it was the second cutest thing you've ever seen in your life. It was so cute. You had to hop and jump and so, may do that again. And coming up today, we've got a live Zoom bingo for children. And then we're also going to have a Kroll Book Club starting in November. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Linda?
You're muted.
Linda, you're muted.
Sorry, I didn't want you to hear the gardening noise and I'd forgotten. Irene, I'm curious about the upcoming election and whether the library is going to be a voting center?
We have not, we have not been contacted about being a voting center. I think that they're having a vote ballot box, acceptance box in City Hall, but I'm not sure.
There is, and we took, I took a look at it this morning. It is out in front of City Hall and it appears to be very safe. But I know there's, there's an awful lot of paranoia going around right now.
Well, here's our, here's our Acting City Clerk, Amanda Merlow, who is working with the county voter group.
Good morning, everyone. I can add a little bit to that. We did ask about the library being a voting center and because of their new social distancing guidelines, it's actually not large enough. So there won't be one there this year. And so far in the city, the only thing we will have is the ballot drop box that was just installed last week.
So no place in the city then for in-person?
Correct, correct.
I, I believe there's one though at Santa Anita. That's probably closest to us.
I'll have to double check on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd heard about the one at Dodger Stadium, but I, I believe somebody had said something.
So is this the first time we don't have a voting location in San Marino?
Sounds like it.
I can't say for sure, but I, it probably is.
Yeah.
So the only, the only way to vote in San Marino is by mail-in ballot?
Yeah, or you, yeah, you fill in your mail-in ballot and either mail it or you can put it in the drop box, which does not go through the mail. It goes directly picked up by the county.
Okay, and that's in front of City Hall, right?
Right, and you, and there is a new five-minute green parking we've placed right in front of it as well.
That was a great idea, Amanda.
Thanks. I think it was Director Throne's idea.
Any other questions for the librarian? I have one about passports. That's remarkable to have 78 passports just in the few weeks of September. How is it looking moving forward?
The, the appointment book is full. He's doing as many as fast as he can. He meets outside with the applicants, so it's safe. He's just doing a great job.
Thank you. Let's go on, Robert, to the Management Analyst Report.
Good morning, everyone. There's not a whole lot to really report on. The library has continued to maintain its conservative spending habits. There was $355 in general fund revenues and that's fees, late fees, things of that nature. Because this is August, this is not going to reflect the passport revenues. That'll be reported on the October meeting. So I'm sure you're all excited to see those numbers. The library did receive a $20 donation that was specifically for adult Chinese materials. As of now, the library is still not spending out of the donations. The unfortunate news I do have with CIPs is that the reauthorization for the bar of AV upgrade was supposed to be discussed at Friday's meeting. Unfortunately, that did get pushed back. As far as I'm aware, I believe it's the first October council meeting. I'll get confirmation on that at a later date. And then as far as the other projects, those, there, there hasn't been any significant progress on those. Are there any questions for my report?
Are they going ahead with the bottle watering stations?
Yeah, that'll still go ahead. As far as I know, Public Works has been inundated with a lot of CIP projects, so right now it's just, they're overwhelmed at this moment.
Is it still accurate that the library will not open until at least October 31st?
Yes, all of our city facilities have pushed back to that date.
Okay, so there's still some time to get that done before the library looks at reopening?
Right.
That's great, great. Any question? Oh, Robert, I had another question. We were going to look at some of the statistics in a different format? And I'm wondering what the timeline is and when are we going to see that? What, what are your thoughts?
I'm going to schedule another meeting with the Budget Liaisons to discuss that layout. It seems to have gotten a little bit more complicated than I anticipated. So I want to, I want to get your feedback so we can get a format that'll work.
Okay, we want to keep it easy and easy to understand.
Right.
Any other questions for Robert? Robert, let's move on under Continued Business to the update on the library revenue in response to COVID-19. And that's the letter from Finance Director Paul Chung.
Yes, so just to provide a quick summary on this, finance, I asked Finance Director Chung to give me a brief overview of what would happen in light of COVID, what would, what's the anticipated plan, if we need to make any budgetary adjustments. As far as really what we've been told, Paul Chung says, right now it's a little too early to tell. Usually, he wants to get about five to six months of activity before making any changes to the budget. For context, typically what other cities will do is a mid-year review. So January, they'll look at the previous six months and they'll, they'll make adjustments. For San Marino, it's largely been just informative. They'll just look at the past six months and receive and file that report. There hasn't ever been a need to make adjustments to the budget. This year, of course, may be different. We have no idea just because things are changing every day. So as of right now, Paul has said, we're not anticipating any changes. There's going to be the, of course, the budget appropriations, but that's just carryovers from fiscal year 1920. That's not changes to 2021. If the council however determines that the budget for 2021, it needs to be changed, that is absolutely at their discretion to change it. If we find that there's an emergency that needs to occur or something of that nature, then that is absolutely up to the council's direction. But as of right now, our Finance Director has not determined that changes need to be made.
So this puts us in a good spot, Irene, for your team to really go forward and purchase new books that then we advertise and promote, perhaps especially in the children's book realm. I noticed not very much had been spent and I think we can go, go, go.
Yes, the city budget for children's books is $3,000.
That's not much.
We used to get a bunch from the friends, so I'm going to talk to the friends this week and see if I can get some money from them.
How does it work when you're purchasing those children's books? Does she have a list and you kind of go through it during the year and make those purchases? Or is it like the Book of the Month Club through Ingram or something?
Well, with Ingram, they have the most popular books and Tara's very adept at looking at that list and knowing what needs to be purchased. In fact, she just made an order, so we're going to put that in. Still staying within that budget.
Okay. So if she was, if, if we said, just for 10 minutes, don't worry about money. And she put together a list of all of the books she felt in the next few months are being released and are needed in the children's room. How much money would that be?
Well, she was spending, correct me if I'm wrong here, Robert, she was spending at least, well, she had a, what was her budget? Anyway, she was spending thousands and thousands of dollars.
Well, I think she, from my point of view, I think she'll go through that $3,000 fairly quickly. And because a lot of new books were not released in the spring because of COVID, those spring releases and the fall releases are all coming out now.
Yes.
And if we knew that she'd spent that $3,000 and yet there was another $4,000 worth of books that were really needed, I'd like to know that because I'd be willing to bring up as an item to the board, releasing some of that restricted reserve money that's at the bottom of our donation monitor. I think Genevieve and Robert, it was about $52,000.
Right.
And perhaps for our discussion, to release some of that donation money for the purchase of children's books if Tara feels that's needed. And I bring that up now because, you know, we're hearing from Paul Chung that our revenues and everything are steady regardless of the limitations in our donations.
Yes, and just to note, Chair, out of the children's line item, it looks like the library has only spent, well, July and August, there, there's only been expended $190. So there is still plenty of money to spend out of that line item.
Yes.
Or we resort to donations, though. We can absolutely look at the other line items where we're not spending on postage, we're not, well, we might not because of passports, but we're really spending on staff development meetings, on travel, on mileage. So these are opportunities, of course, that we would have with Irene to discuss what potentially might be moved in the general fund before we resort to the restricted donations.
That would be great too. And I, I would think, Robert, that it would help if Tara said, I need $4,000 more or I need $18,000 more to make the purchases. And it would also enable us as a group of trustees to go to our other groups, the Friends, the Foundation or other donors in the community if that's something we felt was important. Okay, next item, discussion of the maintenance schedule for the Kroll Public Library, but I believe we invited Robert, or Michael Throne, and he's not able to join us today, but we've invited him when he returns in October. Is that correct? Okay. And new business, review of the Brown Act.
My trustees, I've attached a summary of the Brown Act in your packet. And the main thing to know is that we're bound by the Brown Act. And mostly what that means, even if we talk to each other, if we talk to more than one person at a time, it's considered a meeting. So we just can't do that. We can't send emails out. So that's why we blind copy each other, so we can't reply all that kind of thing. Does that make sense? So the summary is there for your convenience and can look at it, see if it makes sense to you, but that's what we're trying to do. And that concludes my report on the Brown Act.
Thank you. Are there any written communications or public writings to be distributed, Irene?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn and we will meet on Monday, October 26th at 7:30 a.m. Now, I have to tell you, I am in Boston. It's 10, it's 11:15 here. It's really nice. Thank you all and thanks staff, Amanda, thank you, Susan, thank you. And we are adjourned.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye.
You always have the chair be on vacation when we have these meetings. They go faster, right?
Telling you, they're waiting outside. We're going to go look at some beautiful leaves today and we went to a farm.